I'd like to start my meeting tonight. With the governor's orders, large assemblies in Laxford County are not permitted in the green phase that we are now in to include public means without proper social distancing and CDC guideline following. Tonight's meeting has been advertised to be held in person and also attends online with Zoom with login and call in information posted on our website. If you're calling into the meeting, I'd like to encourage you to remain on the call, but to also go to the township website by Googling East Hemfield Township and to log into our Zoom meeting following instructions on the homepage. Next video and audio is also being recorded. For tonight's meeting, Robert's rules will apply and the meeting will be run by the chairman who is assisted by an employee managing the Zoom site. Everyone on Zoom will have their microphones muted in order for the audio to be heard clearly. For people utilizing Zoom, you will need to use the chat function to be recognized by the chairman. Be recognized with the chat function, you must be either a presenter who's on the agenda or a resident or business owner in East Hemfield Township, which is to comment on the agenda item where you must text your name and address. Your request to speak will then be passed on by staff to the chairman to be recognized. The steps to speak utilizing Zoom are simple. Request recognition by the chairman via chat to speak. Once recognized by the chairman, unmute your microphone. After receiving recognition, speak. When done speaking, mute your microphone. For Zoom, any violations of this mentioned rule will be deemed to be acting out of order and your microphone will be muted immediately without warning. Continued violations will result in you being electronically removed from the meeting. Robert's rules apply for those attending the meeting in person. All voting tonight will be done by roll call vote to ensure votes are properly accounted for. Roll call will be conducted by a township manager. There will be no action taken on any non-agenda items that have non-emergency, non-urgent nature that rise during the meeting. All such items will be referred to staff and will be later handled at a later meeting. East Hemfield Township's public rules apply for all public comment. You must be a resident or business owner at a township to speak. You must identify yourself by name and address before speaking and sign the guest log for meeting minute purposes or follow the chat procedure already discussed for Zoom attendance. Comment is limited to three minutes and must be about the agenda item being discussed, with the exception of public comment at the end of the meeting for non-agenda items. No action will be taken during the public comment period for non-agenda items where all issues are referred to staff. We ask for your patience and understanding as we strive to residents and businesses meeting your needs while still complying with all the rules and regulations of our governor. With that, we'll now go to the first agenda item. Please join me for a moment of silence in the pledge. Now, a pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May be seated. Okay, our first item that we have tonight is actually a public hearing. It's for a text amendment change to our signage. It's the Stobro hearing as we're calling it tonight. I will turn this over to our solicitor to ride the, basically lead this hearing and we do have some testimony from those that are making this request.
I'd like to know if this is the ordinance that we have to. And. After they're done their presentation. That point. Stop the order.
Yeah, I don't have, we don't have that one. Buddy, whenever Nate's on there, I have all five exhibits on there. I think that's all you sent me.
Yeah, I think that's right.
Okay.
We'll walk through them.
Whenever you want Nate to go to a next one, just ask him to go to the next slide.
Right. So, good evening. My name's Claudia Schenk from McNeese Wallace and Nurick and I'm here this evening in behalf of Stobro LP with the text amendment petition.
Ms. Schenk, you're probably going to want to step as close as you can to that microphone. Just, I know we have problems with people hearing at times.
Or hold it. That helps.
I'll probably hold it. Here, if I can get it out of here.
There you go.
So, here with me this evening is Steve Norman from Stalfers of Kissel Hill, as well as Randy Bergy from Horst Signs, who's the sign consultant for the project. So, I know that this has been before the board a number of times on procedural issues, but is discussed by your solicitor. Tonight's sort of our opportunity to put on our testimony to discuss in more detail the proposal that we have before you. So, although there's been some subsequent discussion about what's proposed, I'm going to try to sort of start back from the beginning and really walk through the chronology of how we got to the place where we are this evening, why we think the proposal makes sense from a planning perspective, and then also why Stalfers feels that this is an important change for their business operations. So, as you know, Stobro LP is the owner of the Stalfers site, which is located along 741, roughly a 20-acre site. Stalfers has been operating there since the 70s. In 2008, they did do an expansion where they constructed the new grocery store building in the back and converted the operations to the building along 741 to just the garden center operations. So, this project initially started when Stalfers approached us and approached Randy with a desire to update some of the signage on their property. And this is something that they have done in some of their other locations. We came to the township and had some discussions up front with township staff about that. Stalfers has been at least five or six times to the zoning hearing board here in the township for variance requests in order to be able to have the signage that's now on the property in place. So, in having conversations with staff, we discussed, does it really make sense to go back to the zoning hearing board yet again? Or knowing that the township is looking at making some changes to its sign ordinance, would it be better instead to petition to amend the zoning ordinance? Based on those discussions, we decided to move forward with the petition. So, we circulated several drafts of that with staff before we submitted it. And actually, in February of this year, we appeared at the planning committee and had a discussion with the planning committee about what was proposed, received generally favorable feedback at that time. So, in May, we submitted our petition to amend the zoning ordinance. This board did refer it to the township and the county planning commissions for their comments. In July, the county planning commission recommended approval of the amendment. And then just recently in August, we made a presentation to the township planning committee, or commission rather, and they also recommended approval. So, I'll just walk through briefly the text changes that we're proposing and then I'll let Steve talk a little bit more in detail about what they would mean for Stalfers as a business and why they're important for their site. So, as I indicated, it's been discussed, I know, for some time now at the township, preparing a comprehensive amendment to the signage provisions in your ordinance. And in the beginning of this project, we talked about whether that could be coupled with what we're looking to do. Unfortunately, from a timing perspective, it didn't seem like our timing was going to line up with the process that the township would need to undertake to rewrite its entire ordinance with respect to signs. So, what we tried to do is really create sort of a test case situation. What we're proposing is in large part an expansion of some of the signage regulations that apply to the Lime Springs Square Development, which is across the street from Stalfers. So, in many respects, it mirrors those provisions, but you know, it applies on a very limited basis. So, it can only apply to lots that meet free criteria. They have to be located in the RCC zone as this tract is. They have to have a minimum of one acre and they have to have a principal commercial use. So, it's going to apply on a more limited basis. Obviously, this is not the only tract that this amendment would apply to, but the idea is that if it works well, the township could fairly easily expand it to other commercial districts or lots within the township. There's two components really to the proposal, building signage and freestanding. In terms of building signage, what we're proposing would be two feet, square feet of signage per one linear foot of exterior building wall space, up to a maximum of 100 feet per wall. And then that signage could be allocated among the building's faces, however the, they're wanted. So, I have a map up here of the site and I think maybe this would be the best way to sort of talk through the logic behind this from a business perspective. So, if you look at the building, the garden center building along 741, and I'm just going to use rough estimate numbers here, these aren't exact numbers, but it's roughly 150 feet wide and 360 feet long. So, if you think of it as a rectangle, 150 by 360, obviously for the, the two feet of signage per each foot of frontage up to a maximum of 100, with a building of this size, you're going to max that out. So, you would be entitled to 100 feet of signage on each side of the building. Looking at the positioning of the building, it's located along Grubaker Run on one side. Obviously, the rear of the building is, is part of sort of the garden center area. Those are places where it really doesn't make sense for Stalfers to have signs. So, rather than having signs on those two faces of the building, what we're proposing would allow us to reallocate that signage to the places on the building where it makes sense. So, along 741 and along the, the parking lot area where customers are coming into the site. So, under this proposal, and again, these are not exact numbers of what we're looking at, but instead of having 100 feet on each side, you could have 200 feet on, along 741 and 200 along the parking lot area and then no signage on the other two sides. So, it just allows a little more flexibility for the user to decide where are the places where it really makes sense for the signs to be located. In terms of freestanding signs, one would be permitted per commercial development, except in situations where the lot is bordered by one or more arterial or collector street. So, in this particular case, we have 741, we also have Good Drive, so two signs would be, two freestanding signs would be permitted. The maximum area for those signs would be 150 square feet each. There are a number of things that this ordinance does not address. It does not address the height of signs. It does not deal with window display signs, doesn't deal at all with digital signs, those are already permitted by your ordinance, and any other types of signage that would be located on the property besides freestanding and building. So, for example, directional signs are not impacted by this change. In terms of the justification from a planning perspective, there are a number of reasons why we think that this makes sense. First, as you know, your comprehensive plan talks about the importance of adopting a new sign ordinance, and I'm reading directly here, which allows greater flexibility for business signs and modern LED signs. So, you know, I'd submit that this is exactly the kind of change that would allow greater flexibility for business, and you'll hear a little bit more about that from Steve. The second reason that I think that this makes sense from a planning perspective is it's going to reduce trips to the zoning hearing board. Something that county planning noted is the number of trips to the zoning hearing board here in the township that are related to signage. A lot of the, the traffic to the zoning hearing board that, that you're experiencing is for sign variances. And you know, when you go to the zoning hearing board, there can be irregularity in terms of decisions that are issued. And so, you know, by having this change in your ordinance, there would be a less of a need for business owners to incur that time and cost and more predictability for them as well in terms of what's permitted. So, with that, I will turn it over to Steve and I'm just going to let him talk through Stalfers' business plan and why this is important for them.
First, thank you Claudia for all your work and the details that you presented to us. I also want to thank the board tonight for letting me speak personally this evening to you all. My name is Steve Norman. I'm the chief operating officer at Stalfers of Kissel Hill. I oversee the lawn and garden line of business of our company. I'm also one of the owners of Stalfers of Kissel Hill. We are a family-owned business, independent, and have been operating since 1932. We have been trying very hard to succeed in this very competitive marketplace that we're in right now, and we have a long relationship with the Hemfield Township and deep roots within the community. As an independent family-owned business, we're competing every day with national grocery chains and also big box stores. And as a local retailer, we struggle to compete against these national brands. We have seen, we've all seen these national brands buy up local competition and most recently in our backyard here. We realize that we have to operate in these very competitive marketplaces. There's retailers all around us, and yet, as a business owner, we want to ensure the viability and the success of our business in the future, well into the future here in Hemfield. It's been very challenging for all of us right now. COVID-19 has had a tremendous impact on our business. We know that we must be more competitive in order to survive. For these reasons, we're looking at some business improvements. First, we need to freshen up our look. We're going to flip these pages. Bear with me, John. We know that we need to freshen up our look and improve our appearance. And some of the pictures that Claudia has outlined and has presented earlier, I'm going to play this out. We also know that street appeal is so important to a business. Our current road sign at Roarstown Road is very, very bad. It's, it's, I'm, I'm up here saying, I'm almost embarrassed to say, we've been operating this long with a sign that wooden framed with old changeable letters. It's definitely not up to date or in keeping with today's marketplace, especially with the competition right neck, right across the street. Number two, we feel that we need to better convey who we are as a retailer, present ourselves as a more vibrant and relevant retailer in the community. Our buildings are not currently clearly identifiable. So, I'm just going to throw this out to you, and to be honest, if you were new in the area, would you be able to tell what kind of business, as you drove up and down the Roarstown Road, I'm going to flip this back, as a visual? And if you were driving either north or south, would you have any inkling of what kind of business is in that building? I dare to guess you probably would not fare well on being able to give a guess, and that's one of the reasons why we think the signage is so important. Who or what is going on inside of that building as a business? We're looking for some flexibility to allow us to make several changes to help us stand out. Even more important for a standalone business, which is who we are, is to pull shoppers into our parking lot. We know that we're not Belmont, we're not the Tanger Outlet, we're not a major shopping center that draws a lot of traffic in. We understand that many, many folks drive up and down Roarstown Road on a daily basis. And if this was signed more effectively, our business that is, would customers know who we are? You could say, and there are studies that show that multi-million exposures are drawn from the signage that a business has, and we feel that would be done with correct signage. We need to create more awareness of our brand. Do they know what kind of business we are when they travel up and down the road? Do they know the terrific products that we have inside our building? So, with some minimal improvements, signs that will be tasteful in design, we really believe these signs will begin to answer those questions, especially for those customers that are newer to the community, and we know in each of the communities surrounding our store, not everybody is aware of who Stalfers is. We're trying to improve the appearance, and so allowing us that flexibility to show our business to them will improve our brand, and these signs are vital for us to better compete in today's competitive market. We're very proud to be operating in Hemfield. We have very loyal customers and we want to grow. So, how can we make this happen? I just want to thank you again for this opportunity and would ask for your consideration for our project. Thank you. Any questions? Yep, sure. So, I think the first was the oversight site plan, and then this next example is the before shot where you just see the side of a building. And I liken this to if you had a tractor, it looks like a tractor trailer driving down the street, and I've used that kind of analogy, and the more I look at it, it's very nondescript. And so, the way the traffic flows on Roarstown Road, you can be parked there for a second or two before the light changes, and if you glance over right or left, it would not give you any inclination of what's in that building as a retailer. And most people want to have some sense of what's, what a business is before they'll make a turn into your parking lot. So, we're handicapped in that respect. What we're proposing is to put just a few signs on that building that tell a little bit, a little bit of a story of who we are. So, for existent home and garden, outdoor living, and then our name, Stalfers of Kissel Hill, none of which currently is on that building. We're also proposing down the road to put windows in that are like showroom windows to give a little bit of a glimpse of what we would be offering. In the spring, it's patio furniture. Right now, we're getting ready for fall and Christmas, you'd see the whole ambiance of a Christmas kind of winter wonderland that just kind of almost at arms, arms reach. It'd be very powerful. Secondly, what we have currently is the before sign on Good Drive for our grocery, and what we're suggesting is covering up and, and closing the, the columns and just giving us more of impact with signage. So, the overall sign structure doesn't change, we're just modifying. And then I alluded to the very dilapidated sign, and I am obviously embarrassed to say that's one of our current signs on our property, but it's probably held together with years of paint and just kind of one windstorm away from going down. But the, the sign letters aren't efficient, we have to run team members out, and because of the inefficiencies there, typically that sign stays static as far as a message for, you know, a week or two. What we're looking to do is get something that's more up to date, that our customers would be able to see not only who we are, but a more current, more relevant message that we could change more than once a week. And then what we have is a change on the fresh foods. If you look, if you look at this center picture from a distance, you, you probably can't even tell what the business is. The colors are so subtle, and I think we did some studies that on Roarstown Road, you can't even tell, you know, what that business is, hence you wouldn't turn in unless you had been there previously. So, what we're doing is eliminating some of the graphics, going with a very simplified lettering that states what our business is. And then back to the building right on Roarstown Road, we would be eliminating a sign up in the corner, and then from a vantage point traveling south on Roarstown Road, putting some light signs that actually would kind of keynote some of the departments within the store once again to reinforce to customers traveling down the road, what is that business? Do I want to turn in? Because right now, there's nothing in this business model that tells me why I would turn in. And once again, I think Roarstown Road is in the top three intersections of the county. There's a lot of traffic and we are just not able to tap into that potential customer base. So, any questions?
Could I just go, could we go back to the beginning?
You betcha.
The first slide?
Is that the one you're?
The next one, no, the next one. Is this, is this what we'll see with the change in terms of the, the top?
This is, this is what we're proposing, home and garden, Stalfers.
Yeah, that's fine.
Something that had effect.
Yeah, and that's, that's the finished, that'd be the finished product there, or something, something very close.
Conceptually, yes.
Okay, how about the next, the next slide?
So, this is the foods, this is the before.
Right.
And then the after.
Okay. The next slide?
This is the current proposed.
And you're right, you do need to improve that sign, there's no doubt about it. And that's somebody that shops at your store and, and we, I, we know what's there. How large is the electronic message center, which is, which is, that's, that's what I call it? I think I make a distinction between a digital sign and an electronic message center. Most of the time, I believe, electronic or digital sign provides information about a business that's there rather than putting up ads that don't apply, you know, for, let's say for a funeral home.
Oh, right.
Or something along that line. How large do you anticipate that sign is?
I think currently we have, it's 48 inches by 120 inches.
Four by 10, okay. Okay, could we go one more step? Go to walk through?
So, current situation, scenario, moving to something along those, that vein, the color might not be that specific color.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
If we look at the site signs that you've shown, you can start there, we can go backwards.
Okay.
In the Gable profile, what's the square footage of that sign?
Of that sign right there?
Yes.
I don't know that off the top head, Randy, in the foods triangular position.
The one you have up here?
Correct. At the top, yep.
That one is orange and white.
So, that is 100 square feet? Fine. Can we? The new sign there next to you, size? At your fingertips, what size is that?
This sign right here?
Yes.
The Stalfers above the digital, it's a tad larger than the 48 by 120.
You're proposing and requesting 150 square feet. Is that what it is?
Pardon me, sir, pardon me, sir. For the people that are on Zoom, if you could come up and use the microphone.
Yeah, I know that everything proposed here is within what we're proposing square footage wise in the ordinance. So, it says here, Roarstown Road pylon, the new pylon is a total of 82 square feet, so that would be four by 10 is 40 square feet for electronic portion and 42.1 for the Stalfers of Kissel Hill, top sign portion.
And if we could go back to the, I think it's the second plate on, no, the next one, please. Okay, square footage of those?
So, yeah, so the, again, the Stalfers of Kissel Hill Fresh Home, Fresh Foods Home and Garden is 41.1, and the area underneath, again, that would be a four by 10 area, so that would be 40 square feet. So, we're at 81, 40 and 41.1 is 81.1.
So, neither of them are 150 square feet? When this board reviewed these at last meeting, it was determined that I was confused by the amount of information for this topic, including the previous ordinance, some historical things, and frankly, I misunderstood. I voted to agree to advertise this based on a statement that the signs would be 100 square feet. I cannot agree to item 2C, which goes back to one of my original concerns, which by mathematics would have allowed a sign of 360 square feet on a side of a building. Or as Claudia previously pointed out, you take the hundreds and bring them around and you put them all on one side of the building. Now we have signage in excess of 100 square feet. And that, to me, is not necessary, and I believe it is unsightly. The other concern I have is paragraph 3B, which allows these 150 square feet signs on the building perimeter. And is that the signage part or does that include pylons? We've had an experience where a sign became much larger because of its structure. These ordinances get interpreted in a way that later we wish we had worded them more carefully. And this is my concern, that some of this wordage would allow for signage which could be said to be pollution. I don't mean to be wise guy, don't know how else to say it. Your photograph of the grocery store had a full parking lot. I have grown up knowing staffers. You don't need that kind of signage, believe me. You need reputation. You have competitors in this township and in this community that don't have this kind of signage. Their parking lots are full too. 100 square feet, I'm willing to accept that that's reasonable signage. Anyone driving who can't read 100 square foot sign should not be driving. This is my position.
And the other, the other concern that, or one of the concerns that I have is the, the unintended consequence of a text amendment change for you, which appears to be appropriate. I mean, there's, there's no doubt, uh, I'm not, I'm personally not opposed to what you're suggesting here. But I'm, I'm, I'm more opposed to the way we're doing it with, with the text amendment. As you said, you've been before the zoning hearing board four or five times previously, and you've been, you've been successful. Everything that I see here from a, a structure and appearance standpoint, I, I really have no problem with. I ju, I just believe that, given the fact that we are planning at some point for a comprehensive rewrite of our zoning ordinance, doing this now before we get into that, you know, is not appro, is not, is, may not be appropriate. This is a unique situation for a very specific applicant. And I'm of the understanding that, you know, zoning decision shouldn't be made along that, made along that line. Again, I'm supportive of what you want to do. I, I, I'm hopeful that we can find a way to achieve your goal. But I just would prefer that it not be done with a text amendment because the text amendment, again, locks us in in other, other places where we may not want that, that, that type of signage to apply.
I could just speak to that just briefly, directly. So the concern from a zoning hearing board perspective, and I hear what you're saying, you know, you've been to the zoning hearing board before. You could go back again and ask for relief. The concern there is really what we're asking for would be a variance. And as you know, the legal standard for a variance is very high. Basically, we have to demonstrate an undue hardship. Legally speaking, it's very difficult to ever meet those criteria. So the zoning hearing board could decide to turn it down. And if they did, there really wouldn't be any other avenue of relief that we would be able to pursue with respect to that. So that's part of the concern. The other concern is, the reason we've been so many times is each time you go to the zoning hearing board, they make the decision contingent upon the testimony that you've presented. So any little change or tweak that we want to make in the future, basically, we have to return again back to the zoning hearing board. And obviously, there's time and cost associated with that. So the hope with this proposal was that it would sort of open things up a little bit so that, you know, 10 years down the road, when, you know, things change yet again, and there's a need to, to, to change the signage or change the appearance of the signage, that could be done without having to, you know, once again restart the process of going to the zoning hearing board.
That's, I understand your thinking, okay.
Other testimonies that you want to?
Right.
No, I do not.
I do, do have a question as well. In the beginning, you had talked about, um, to, to Tom's point here, a li, a little bit, you covered about the restrictions and how this could actually be a test case for us to take a look at. Could you just go over that again? What are the requirements? So this would not apply to every property within this zone, correct?
No, it would only apply in the RCC zone and then only to lots that are one acre or larger that have a principal commercial business.
And the, the signs would have to be located on the business property.
Correct.
Correct? They couldn't be located on another property advertising for the business.
Correct.
So we really are talking a limited number of properties that this would affect, correct?
That's correct. And I think the idea, and in talking with staff, was we drafted this in such a way that it would be very easy for you to expand it if it works well. But of course, you wouldn't have to if you don't like it in application.
Secondly, we heard a little bit, and I, I heard this at the planning commission meeting as well. I know you were questioned a little bit on the actual need for this. And could you just specifically go into why this is so important again for your business?
Thank you, I appreciate that. One of the major reasons is we have a very nondescript building right on the road. And for many, many folks that are not native to Hempfield, will just drive right past. There's nothing to pull them in. And because it's our site, it's not a, like I mentioned, it's not a major retail center with other stores populated, they would not turn left or right in. And so we're trying to get visibility, brand awareness, a recognition of who that is in that building. And because we have currently nothing to accentuate, you know, who we are, nothing to call attention. Tom, I appreciate that you're a shopper of ours and you, you know, you're aware of it. So you're going to make a left or right into the, the facility and shop. But for many people, you know, they're drawn to something that either catches their eye. And I know I gotten some studies from Randy on customers. And the sign itself was the decision maker for driving into a site. That, that's a major, major factor for this location.
And just one last question for me. The area that we're talking about here on 741, can you describe the signs that are on the other side of the street from you and also up the street at your competition?
Well, any, anybody that's a retailer in general, maybe not specific to a home and garden or foods, has a identifier sign. There's Royal Farms up the street that has some information on what they're selling product wise. So we don't have anything really specific to draw attention to our property in conjunction with the digital sign that we're proposing. Thank you.
Weaver, do you have anything you want to add before I jump in?
Uh, the only question I had is, basically, you had a building that would allow, say, 400 square feet of sign. Nate, can that entire 400 square feet be put on one side of the building? Or does it have to be divided up 100 square feet per side?
I suppose theoretically you could, although I can't imagine that most businesses would want to do that. I mean, probably, you know, any signage package is going to sort of allocate it around the building in places where it makes sense.
Okay, just one, just one more. We're, we're talking about signage here. We're talking about building signage and standalone signage, right?
Yes.
Okay, and this particular ordinance deals with, on the building's signage and not the pylon type.
It deals with both. So it deals with the freestanding signs and the building signs.
So are the numbers that are, are generated in terms of square footage, do they accumulate to the, I, I assume 400 square feet?
So we deal with the freestanding signs separately, and that's generally how it's, it's handled in your zoning ordinance. But like I said, those are permitted to be a maximum of 150 square feet each. You know, which is less frankly than some of the signage in the area that is permitted. I think in, in, right across the street, you can go in the mixed use development sign center up to 350.
Across the street?
Yes.
Okay. First, thank you. This has been a long process for you. I helped develop the comprehensive plan. I was the one that chaired the committee that created the comprehensive plan. And I'm the one that put in there about updating the sign ordinance. Given the issues that we've had with complaints from businesses over the past years and issues with the zoning hearing board and having the expense of property owners have to go before the zoning hearing board, which is a very expensive proposition, we had flagged that. We had also flagged in our comprehensive plan not to repeat the way we did our subdivision and land development update and the zoning update last time, which became a 10-year process, that we would annually look at our ordinances and we would do text amendment updates of areas. And designing, the signs was one of the ones that we were doing. So when you guys came before us originally, that was why we set you down this path. Obviously, we got a, a board with mixed opinions right now, but that was the path you were sent down. And I appreciate you stepping up to the challenge of doing that. I'd first off just want to say, as a local business in our township, I appreciate that you're here. I think we all do, even though you're a mixed opinion. I think all, you'll recognize all five board members here. I greatly appreciate your, your business and certainly want to see you do well against the national companies. Everybody likes the roof of the local. And I certainly want to see you be successful and do what we can to help you with that success by just competing on a fair playing field. I think that's all a business would typically ask, it's just that the playing field's level. Regarding this text amendment, I'm supportive of it. I appreciate that you're not using the full 150. You don't need it for your freestanding sign. I would recognize though that if you had a couple of tenants, businesses that also want to have signs, that's where you start getting to the 150. Right now, you are the sole business with a lawn, lawn, lawn and garden center and a, a grocery store. But if you had some additional tenants, you would probably be back at us at this point to add to those signs. And I would accept that because that's, that's why there's, there's the provisions in there for much larger signs. It's because of that, that's what the businesses are looking for. They want to have, they want to have road for orange signs in there. So I'm not, the 150 doesn't bother me at all, nor does the, the signs on the buildings themselves. I think we do need to look at our sign ordinance. This does become a model, we can certainly see how it goes. But I do know the number, this is what has been presented to us in the past by other businesses, and this is kind of in line with what businesses are looking at in the township, just in general. And we really just can't have everybody going to the zoning hearing board every time they want to assign. So the, our staff knows my opinion on this one. I made it very clear that we would look at in the zoning situation, what is the most common things that people are seeking variances for? Because that usually indicates there's a problem with your ordinance. If you have a, a common recurring theme where people are constantly going, designing hearing board seeking variance for one specific item. And about 25% of our cases right now are all related to signs, which is a significantly high number. When you start putting the dollars and costs, it costs the township money, it costs applicant money. It's a lose-lose situation for everybody involved. So I appreciate you doing this. I want to see your business be successful. I understand we're having this debate, it's more on the philosophical side of things, not, not a reflection of your, your business or, because I think we're all, we all agree, we just come at it from different ways, what's the best approach for the township. And we have gotten stung in the past with other tax amendments. I don't think that'll be the case in this situation, but I've been proven wrong in other situations. So there's, there's always that, that situation where you make a text amendment and someone comes to with an interesting interpretation that was never the intent of the text amendment. But that happens with everything that we do. So thank you for taking the time to do this and go down this route.
Thank you.
So I guess we would take questions from the audience at this point? Yeah. So in the audience at this point, before we go to Zoom, is there anybody that has any questions we'd like to offer? Ask anything or? I see none. Nate on Zoom, is there anybody?
Mr. Chairman, there is no one on Zoom.
Okay. So seeing no questions, is there any questions to the board at this point?
I only would like to say, if we approve this, it creates a precedent. And what they're showing us is not in the magnitude of the signs, which I would find objectionable. And so I'm puzzled as to why they would want that allowance. I just, I can't, I can't agree to the ordinance that provides for that kind of signage because somewhere, we're going to get to a situation where we won't be able to deny it then. So this ordinance can be drafted in a way that coincides with what you're showing. I would have a different position on it. Thank you.
Well, if you want to stay around, this will be on the agenda later tonight. So with that, we are going to conclude this hearing.
I did have a question.
Oh, you got, okay, Mr. Wiggles, where does one more question?
For staff. With the back and forth, did staff have any input into the ordinance and the size of the signs and the language that we have in the ordinance based upon some of the zoning hearing requests that we had?
I'll start out by saying that, um, throughout this whole process, Claudia approached me first and asked the best way to, hate to use the same word twice, but approach the situation. I recommended that she look at the sign ordinance that was adopted for the Lime Spring Square Development. And she did. And through my review, she tailored the proposal before you gentlemen from Stowbro in keeping with what Lime Spring did for their signs. As far as requests for zoning hearing board, I'm not sure if I understand you.
When you reviewed this, does, does this ordinance change address some of the issues that we have going before the zoning hearing board?
Yes, yes, it does.
Would it eliminate the need for some of the zoning hearing board requests?
I think it would. In this instance, staffers and Lowe's have been setting the, the mark in this area in the regional commerce center zone, being on Roarstown Road and also having access or frontage off of Good Drive. Those two properties have been to the zoning hearing board multiple times in researching Staffer's property. At least five, if not six times, just for signage. Staffer's property has been to the zoning hearing board. One of those was actually withdrawn, one was for a temporary sign. But the signs that are out there today would not meet our current ordinance, but they are compliant. They're compliant with the zoning requirements that the zoning hearing board placed on the Staffer's property. So I think if, if this ordinance were to be passed, it would be a, it would be beneficial to a lot of commercial properties along Centerville Road and Roarstown Road.
And so John, if I understand you correctly, you just said that the And so, John, if I understand you correctly, you just said that the current signs that are there at Stalfers' now would not meet our zoning regulation standards. They had to get a variance for those signs. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So the modest signs that they're looking to replace wouldn't even meet our ordinance, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions to the board before we, okay, so with that, it's about eight or seven fifty, and we're going to conclude this hearing. Our hearing team actually will make the official hearing team to motion to close the hearing.
So I'm in.
Okay, we have a motion from Mr. Wigglesworth. And Mrs. Schweitzer, please poll the board.
You need a second?
Second.
Yeah, second.
Thank you. Mr. Weaver?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye.
Mr. Wigglesworth?
Aye.
Mr. Russell?
Aye, aye, aye. And the hearing's closed. Okay, next up, we have another special agenda item. It's the recreational authority, and they're going to do a presentation on the lease of the banquet facility at Four Seasons. And it's going to be led by Mr. Ryan Lundey, the chairman. It looks like I see Mr. Trump there in the background as in Dan Trump. And Michael Brown, who is on the agenda, is not present tonight.
That's correct.
So, and as I understand it, Ryan is going to be calling in on Zoom. So how are we going to run this hearing right now?
He was here. There he is. Ryan, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Live at this point. Ryan, the floor is yours, and I
Okay.
have Dan in the audience right now.
Thank you very much. Well, first, thank you to the board for allowing me to present tonight what our intentions are for the Four Seasons property. First, just a quick introduction. My name is Ryan Lundey. I am the chairman of the Hemfield Recreation Authority. Our task has been to attempt to better fulfill the needs of the management of the golf course and the banquet center over at Four Seasons. Throughout the now almost two-year process, we have entertained several different proposals from restaurateurs and other developers. And we have currently come to one that we feel is the best fit so far to take over the management and the operations of strictly the banquet side. So, you know, food, alcohol sales, things of that nature, nothing on the golf course side. So, and I'm going to be looking at a Word document that I have on another screen here. There's approximately fourteen thousand square feet at the banquet facility that we are looking to lease to a third party. The two tenants are two local businessmen that are familiar in the restaurant business. They have, you know, several different avenues for financing through a bank or just personal savings. The proposed use would be for a sit-down restaurant in what is now the existing banquet facility. And then also have the capabilities to continue to have banquets, you know, whether it's weddings or golf outing, things of that nature at the facility as well. We would essentially be in, we would be leasing our liquor license that we have at the property to this entity. So they would be running that for us at that point. The lease terms would be roughly ten years now with another ten years proposed in the lease negotiations right now that are, you know, that are ongoing. The only thing that we would need from the township specifically would be for an update on the HVAC within the existing building, which we would hope to secure after we had a signed lease in hand. That way, we would not have any large financial commitments from the township prior to at least having some recurring revenue coming in from the existing facility. The timing would be, we hope to sign a lease, you know, with the Board of Supervisors approval within the next several weeks, you know, so end of September, early October. And just an additional plan that we have with a recent update was the potential for adding structure onto the north side of the building, which would be a deck, you know, for, to accommodate more outdoor eating, dining, gatherings. You know, not specifically for, you know, coronavirus, but just they feel that that would be, you know, an added feature that would be would be best for their operations going forward. So that is more or less what we're just presenting to the board as far as what we would like to do before we get into a formal agreement with a third party. And the terms that we're looking at, I would say greatly help not only the golf course, but the township as the golf course and banquet operations draw or do have drawn, you know, funds from the township over the last several years, which we would hope this lease would eliminate that need going forward.
Thank you, Ryan. Mr. Trump, do you have anything you wish to add? Thank you, Dan. Tom, I don't know if you want to add anything more since you said on the authority or?
Generally, things are moving in a good direction, I think, with the prospective tenant. The Rec Association has done a good job in terms of, I think, achieving some of the objectives that the board is looking for as far as the golf course operation is concerned. I think this will really be the first step in a comprehensive, I don't know if I call it a development of the tract of land there on the corner of Church and Stony Battery, but it's all very positive from my standpoint. I think sooner we, again, sooner we get a signed lease in place, the sooner we can move forward with the repair of the HVAC and get them in there. I would also add, it's my belief, and Dan, you and Ryan, it's my belief that the prospective tenant is going to make a significant investment in the property. You have an estimate of the dollars they're going to invest there generally?
Yes, it was, I think, roughly anywhere from three to three hundred and fifty thousand dollars that they were going to be putting into the property initially, which was, as you know, Tom and Scott, was one of our, I would say, we were held back with what our ability to accomplish anything with the facility with, in terms of that size of capital investment that a third party could bring in that we would not necessarily have at our disposal to do anything with at the facility, so.
So yeah, we'll have a good lease. We'll have an investment in the property. We'll have a long-term arrangement, hopefully. And a lot of those are the keys in terms of the whole process.
Well, anybody else on the board have anything?
I'd just like to thank the board and the Rec Authority for the work that they've done and for Tom taking the lead on this from our board. I think it's, it's good. It's heartening.
The Rec Authority is really taking the lead. I haven't really done anything here.
Well, the Rec Authority, thank you.
Do we understand that the HVAC system is the only upgrade that the township is expected to do? I'm thinking of the concerns we've had with the site about the entrance off of Church Street. We have a gravel area that isn't paved. Is there going to be a need for that paving? Is there going to be a need to change the entranceway? The kitchen facility, is that all going to be managed by the lessee? There are a number of things to make this a successful operation, in my opinion, that I'm wondering where the township responsibility might occur.
Yes, that was one of the things, or several of the things that we did discuss with, in the negotiations. And part of that three hundred or three hundred and fifty thousand, depending on where they fall, would fall in the kitchen. So upgrading what they need to in the kitchen, whether it's refrigeration or, you know, with the stove top and the other pieces of equipment that, you know, probably have not been used in many years within that facility, that would fall to the tenant. The parking lot, we did discuss that as far as getting the the gravel part paved. At this time, I don't believe we have a need to do it. I think that would be something that we could address going forward, depending on likely the success of their business and how comfortable we felt with, you know, how we wanted to split that up as far as who pays for what. The one thing I think that would be exterior of the facility would be some type of signage that they would also pay for as well. So at this time, the only, the only cost that we have discussed that the township has or that we're asking the township to pay for would be the HVAC at this time.
Okay.
We're going to, we'll turn over to Zoom questions, and man, it looks like we got one that's coming our way. First off, thank you, Ryan, for everything that you guys are doing. It's been ten years in the making to get even to this point. We're having this discussion. One nice thing for any resident that is listening in on this conversation, when we talked about this years ago about why we need to create a recreation authority, we put out that we are roughly operationally on every good year losing two hundred thousand dollars a year on the golf course, which the taxpayers are paying for to make up that difference. And the purpose of creating the Recreation Authority was to run the golf course more like a business and then the reliance on tax-paying dollars to keep it black. And this is definitely, as we talked, a very good, positive first step to doing that and to, for us being wise stewards of the taxpayers' funds, actually using our tax dollars on roads and public improvements and not on operational costs of a golf course. So you guys hats off and commend you for taking this very first important step, which will make a big dent into the two hundred thousand dollar shortfall that we have each year with the golf course. So I want to thank you guys for that step. You guys are doing an awesome job with what you're proposing. And there's actually a lot more to come. This is just the first step. This is what we call low-hanging fruit to get this done. And there's going to be a lot of changes over the next couple of years at that golf course that will keep a golf course for a long time, which is one of the things that was made very clear to us as a board was not to see the golf course get developed and no longer be a golf course. And so the reason by doing this, these items and bringing businesses into our golf course, it allows it to remain a golf course and remain a open space for the township. So this is, this is all really very positive with it, and I'd see that we're supplanting. So is there any questions of the audience at this point before we go to Zoom? Okay, seeing none?
Mrs., there is one question. Mrs. McMaulan, if you'd like to ask your question?
Yes, I was just interested in whether the tenant will also be operating the golf course snack bar and whether we can depend upon the snack bar to be open during the hours that the golf course is operating. And also, will they be able to handle golf outings at a reasonable price? I don't know what kind of restaurant is going in there, whether it's a very upscale or casual dining. I'm concerned about the price of golf outings or whether it's that kind of restaurant at all. I don't, I don't know. I haven't gotten any information about who the tenant likely to be.
You know, I'll weigh in here. As far as golf, as far as golf outings are concerned, that's really a function of the golf operation, and I'm sure they'll do whatever they can to keep costs reasonable. I think we're looking at a casual dining operation. I'm not a hundred percent sure on that. It's not going to be a, I believe it's not going to be a fine dining situation. Beyond that, the prospective tenant will operate the snack bar and will operate it in a manner that's consistent with the hours at the golf course.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
And again, that's part of when we said, taking care of that two hundred thousand dollar deficit, it's two parts. The first part is going to be the lease payment that we get on an annual basis for running it. The second part is our food operations was losing money. And so when you look at the money lost combined with the revenue coming in, that starts getting us close to the two hundred thousand dollar shortfall that we've been having each year in the township. So those two positives, plus the fact that they're putting money into the facility that we simply don't have, not saying we don't have, it's just not a priority for us to put that money in there. And we, up to this point, had no reason to upgrade the kitchen because it was no longer being utilized anyways because everything was done by catering. So there's a significant investment that's gone inside the building too, in addition to eliminating a perpetual operating cost and adding additional revenue on an annual basis too. So there's a lot of positives by bringing in a tenant.
And one more comment to just address your question. They will operate an event and banquet facility for hire. So they'll continue to function in much the same way that we did.
Is there any more Zoom comments?
No.
Okay, with that, well, thank you. Dan, you're welcome to stay if you want to sit in. But if you'd want to take off too, I'd more understand if you want to, that's fine.
Thank you, everyone, for the time.
Thank you, Ryan. And congratulations to
Thank you.
You got a special delivery coming in a couple days, so.
Yeah, a couple days, yeah. All right. Thank you, Scott.
So now, item number four is in addition to the agenda, and I'll let Mrs. Schweitzer talk about that real quick.
So we have a late addition to the agenda. It's just permission to add to 2220 Dairy Road some agreements to get their plan continued to be moving forward. It's the escrow agreement, the stormwater management fee, the fee in lieu for frontage overlay, and the fee in lieu for the bridge repairs. So if it's okay, I would like to add that to the agenda.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to add this item to the agenda. Okay, most from Mr. Bennett, a second.
Second.
Second from Mr. Weaver. Mrs. Schweitzer, please poll the board.
Mr. Weaver?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye.
Mr. Wigglesworth?
Aye.
Mr. Russell?
Aye, 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 nothing. So with that, we will move on to the consent agenda. The purpose of the consent agenda is approve routine items that usually require very little debate or discussion. And so with that, we'll open up the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to note that the addition to the agenda was added to the consent agenda. For anybody that's paying attention, it is a very routine and basic item.
Thank you. Actually, it's actually a separate item.
You did? I thought I see it here under.
The property is listed, but it's different agreements.
Okay. Thank you.
Busy night.
I see. I stand corrected.
Okay, and any other comments on the consent agenda? Okay, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
Don't move.
Okay, motion from Mr. LaFever, do I have a second? Second from the chair, Ms. Switzer, please poll the board.
Mr. Weaver?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye.
Mr. Wigglesworth?
Aye.
Mr. Russell?
Aye, aye, satisfied, nothing. Okay, now we'll move on to our action items. And the first one up is what we just heard earlier tonight, the Surboro hearing decisions, zoning text amendment for science ordinance number 2020-05. So what is the, the will of the board? You already know where I stand on this, and we obviously know where Mr. LaFever stands on this. We both kind of telegraphed our votes or discussions. So this would be a vote up or down. If it's a down vote, then it would be a discussion of what we would do next. So what's the will of the board?
Just have a couple of comments first. No matter what the outcome is of the vote, I do think this is an issue that we do need to address. We do have an issue with the zoning hearing board and with signs. I think that this would be a good start. It's my belief that it would be a good, as the applicant stated, test case for us to take a look at. It does not cover all the areas within this zone. There were restrictions placed upon it, and I would be in favor of it.
I just, I had a comment also. It does, the ordinance does allow signs larger than I would prefer to see, but I think that's also a marketing decision. And we do support our businesses here, so on the balance, I support the amendment.
Okay, so.
Can I do one more, one more comment? Could I have Nate pull up that PowerPoint that I sent today?
Nate, could you do that?
Just one more comparison, if you will, just so I know what we're, we're looking at. While that's being pulled up, I would just like to say that, you know, township staff acknowledges that a comprehensive rewrite of our sign ordinance is currently under consideration, needed and required. I'm not sure this is the time to be implementing a new text amendment. I believe it's probably not based on, it's probably not good for business owners and residents over the long term, best interests, that we approve piecemeal text amendment changes, ordinances, any ordinance, not just this one. I should have prefaced my comments by saying, I have no problem with what you want to try to accomplish here, okay? My issue is this, is how we're getting there. You know, we have an issue with the zoning, have had issues with the zoning hearing board. I get that, but that's, that's our problem. We should be addressing that and fixing it, just like we should be addressing and fixing our sign ordinance. And that's my comment on that. Nate, can we go to, maybe, just keep paging for a few? Keep going. I did a little research. That's, this is some information that I, I put together. This is your sign in Kissel Hill. And I like that, I like that sign very much. I think, you know, no problem. Keep going. This, this is, this is the one I want to try to get away from. This, this big pylon sign with a big television that's probably, I'm gonna say that's 10 by, 10 by 30, John? How large?
If you bear with me a moment, I did actually pull up the plans that were submitted for building permit. I can tell you exactly.
See, the question for me is, what exactly is the sign here? Is the sign the, the video? Or is it what's underneath it? That mean, that's, that's, that's a, in my mind, it's probably 35 feet tall by 15. That's, that's 600 square feet of sign. I, I just would hate to have this, not that there's anything really wrong with this sign, but I, I don't want these up and down Roarstown Road, or would prefer that we not have them up and down Roarstown Road. And I, I'm not gonna, I don't want to support decisions that move things in that direction. So, how big is that sign?
Approximately 300 square feet. To be specific, 282 square feet, it is 30 feet high.
30 feet high.
And that's not what's being proposed in this ordinance.
Did I hear 15 by 30? Did I hear 15 by 30? The height is 30 feet. The width?
What's the width?
The width is, the width is 16 feet. So it's 16 by 30.
It's almost 400 square feet.
It's over 400.
And again, what's being proposed in here is 150 square feet. And what Lime Springs has there is different than what's being proposed here. I even said that in my testimony. Let me finish.
Sorry.
Because what you have there is you have about 15 businesses. This is one sign for a very large site that represents 15 businesses or something. I can't get the exact count, my, it's not that good. What Stoffers has is just one sign for one business. And so that's where, they're less than 150. They're about 80 square feet, 95, 90 square feet. But if they had another tenant or two, they would want that 150. They would put them right underneath, just like you see at Lime Springs, because those, each one of those individual businesses wants to have their sign with roadway access. That's just a requirement of business. And we can't, we really gotta be careful about dictating to our local small businesses what they can and can't do. Signs are important to businesses. We might not feel it is. And you talk to the post-millennial generation, and they will, you know, they do everything by Google and stuff like that. They don't even look at signs, but it's important to the businesses. And that's why, you know, they don't need the 450 feet, but loads might need more towards 150 feet because they've got two tenants on their property besides loads themselves. And each one of those community aid, I can't remember what store's next to community aid, would each want to have their own sign too, to go along with whatever loads would put up. If loads were to do the same thing that Stoffers is proposing, and probably they will, they'll probably be the next one in once they hear what Stoffers accomplishes. It just gets in topic tonight. I just think it's important, I'm very libertarian. I think it's important that our businesses be given a chance to do what they think is best. Or they're not in the business to put up tacky. They're in the business to get people interested in their, their property. And I think, I know, people don't like it, but I know a number of people, I've got comments that do like the Lime Springs sign. So it's, it's in the eyes of the beholder. And, and but again, that's not what we're talking about. Lime Springs is under a different zoning, and it's designed for a much more clustered business, where you have a lot of businesses, and you want it all consolidated on one sign versus having a whole slew of signs up and down 741, which would be the alternative, so.
Signs would need to be on the individual properties though. So it's, it's too much sign, and it's a distraction for driving. That, that's really an ineffective sign, in my opinion.
I didn't really want to get into a debate here on, not that I want to cut anyone off, or think I even could cut anyone off. But, you know, this is my concern. I like, you know, you spoke, you spoke about millennial generation. They don't even look at these signs. You know, they're, everything is in their, in their hand for the, for the most part. I recognize we, that messages and signage is important. And I also recognize that we can't restrict the message. That's one thing that we can't, cannot regulate. But we can regulate a lot of other things relative to these signs, and I think that we should. And I think the sooner we get busy on, on the sign ordinance, the better.
I just had kind of a hypothetical that, now, this ordinance, Stoffers could come into the zoning hearing board and say, Lime Spring has a 400 square feet sign right across the street, so why can't we have a 400 square foot sign? Potentially, they could get it. So with this ordinance, it would be limited to 150 square feet. So in that sense, I think potentially it's better. Because we don't really know what the zoning hearing board might approve. They could approve something really big.
Okay, I think we all kind of know where everybody stands, so I think we just need to put this one to a vote at this point. So I'll entertain a motion. And I'll read the, the motion here. Motion to approve the Star Row petition to amend the Sanfield Township zoning warrants, sign regulations for the proposed properties located in the RCC zone for ordinance number 2020-05.
Don't move.
Motion from Mr. Wigglesworth, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Weaver, Ms. Switzer, please poll the board.
Mr. Chairman, you do have a comment in Zoom.
Okay.
Mrs. McMullen, if you wanted to speak?
It just struck me that the Lime Spring sign looks very busy and reminds me a lot of the junk that I see down on Route 30 East. And I hate to see that in the township. Just my two cents. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any other comments?
No.
Okay, Ms. Switzer, please poll the board.
Mr. Weaver?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
No.
Mr. LaFever?
No.
Mr. Wigglesworth?
Aye.
Mr. Russell?
Aye, aye, satisfied, three to. And again, this is a philosophical discussion and a policy discussion of the board. All five board members greatly appreciate Stoffers. We appreciate the business and the time and effort that you put into this, so thank you. Okay, next up, we have 2655 Harrisburg Pike petition to amend the zoning map is a acknowledgement request to rezone the property from mean density residential zone to campus zone. I'm going to read the motion just so that the audience understands what we are actually doing tonight. The motion is to accept the State Road Investors petition to rezone 2655 Harrisburg Pike and authorize staff to refer State Road Investors LSC petition to Lancaster County Plan Commission and East Sanfield Township Plan Commission for review and recommendation. So Mr. Beck, four is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Gentlemen, remember, I believe it was last summer, you reviewed a master plan and a preliminary plan for the Penn State Health Lancaster Medical Center and Brookside Development. This property is on the far east side. It is one of the, it is the first residential property you get to as you're traveling east on Harrisburg Pike, on the north side of Harrisburg Pike. State Road Investors has formally taken ownership of the property. And in doing so, they're looking to now add that property to the campus zone officially. So staff is in favor of it. It makes sense to include it into the campus zone as being part, one of the reasons for ownership or taking ownership of the property was because of the significant impact and improvements being done as part of the floodplain restoration on that property. And staff supports the acknowledgement by the board. And if the board acknowledges it and authorizes staff to proceed, we will send it to the County Plan Commission and the Township Plan Commission.
Just kind of for the record too, just from a pro forma perspective, usually for something like this, we just pass it on for review. This is just starting the process for discussions. And I've not reviewed, I actually have no knowledge at all why this is being proposed, and that's what we gotta start this process for. Well, I appreciate staff's endorsement of it. Really, I'll be honest with you, at this point, it doesn't matter one way or the other. The petition has to get, go through the whole process and to validate and flush out the issues that exist with it, so. Any other discussion of the board? Anything from the audience at this point?
There's none.
Okay, so I'll read the motion again. Again, the motion is to accept the State Road Investors petition to rezone 2655 Harrisburg Pike and to authorize staff to refer to State Road Investors petition to Lancaster County Plan Commission, East Sanfield Township Plan Commission for review and recommendation. So do I have a motion?
Don't move.
Okay, motion from Mr. Bennett, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. LaFever? Okay, Ms. Switzer, please poll the board.
Mr. Weaver?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye.
Mr. Wigglesworth?
Aye.
Mr. Russell?
Aye, aye, satisfied, nothing. Okay, next up, we have the Donald R. Miller 1740 Becker Road well waiver request. So who's gonna run with that one?
I will, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Beck?
Thank you, Nate, I appreciate it. Ooh, it's a little, it's a little hard to see. It's not really the, the size, Nate, it's just the lighting here in the, the meeting room. This property has, as an unfortunate event, their septic system was failing, and they need to replace it. Talked to Dave Locker today, he filled me in on what was going on in the process, everything. Their original septic system predates the requirements for state through DEP to have a 100-foot separation distance from their well. It is actually almost right outside of the back door of the house, where the well is located inside the house. They're now proposing to move the septic system and drain field to the front of the house, and that is the only place they can move it on the property. Dave Locker's plan shows that it's approximately 82 feet from the well to where he actually did the perk test. He said because of the drain field footprint, which is much larger than the perk test area, it's approximately 71 feet from the well to the drain field. He said he would have some issues if the drain field was 50 feet or less from the well, but he said in this instance, 71 feet is this, in his professional opinion, the same as 100 feet. And he is, he is confident that this would, this situation would be fine. He's recommending that the board approve the well isolation waiver. He has included two condition, optional conditions for the board. The one is to grant the waiver with the condition that the property owners relocate the well. I asked him what the likelihood of this is or the feasibility. It would be impossible for the property owners to relocate the well. Not only that, it would be astronomically expensive because the well is located inside of that house. The other condition is to add a purification system to the well in the event there is, is a situation that would occur where it would contaminate from the drain field. He did say that in all likelihood, whatever is on the site is already in the water, and this is not going to change that fact. But he said those two are very common conditions that are considered. He also brought up, and does not include this in his letter, he said a hydrologic, hydrologic study. He said, but that's a waste of time and money, because at the end of the day, no professional hydrologist is gonna be able to confirm that there is not gonna be any impact to the well. So with that being said, based on Dave Locker's correspondence and his recommendation, staff agrees with him and recommends the board approve the well isolation waiver.
Now, in terms of motions, he's not mandating that a water purification system be installed, nor is he saying it's.
No, this is simply his recommendation as a possible condition if the board think it'd be appropriate.
Okay, so before we go to questions, I'd just like to read the motion out to you as modified a little bit. The motion to approve the Donald R. Miller request for a well isolation distance waiver for the property at 1740 Becker Road, period. Okay, that would be, my position would be that if our sewage enforcement officer is not saying a purification system needs to be installed, we shouldn't be mandating it.
There should not be a domestic well in this area without a purification system, no doubt.
But I believe that, but that homeowners, and they might have one for all we know.
We have one.
Yeah. I have a family that lives next to a farm too, so yes, they have one to.
Across the street, they had muddy water, so they went to put a new well in, they went to 900 feet and did not have water. They said they were going to try fracking, I don't know if they did or not. That's a deep well.
It would be a deep well.
It is better than, the situation is going to be improved somewhat, though is it? You said they are closer together now than they will be after.
Well, that's part of it, Mr. Weaver. Yes, the existing septic system, the septic tank is right outside the the back door of the house. So, yes, it is going to improve the situation because the system predates any regulations that DEP imposed on on lot septic systems.
Is the drain field downslope or upslope of the well?
That's a great question and I
Those lots are.
Don't think I have that, I don't have that answer. If, this is on the south side of Becker Road. So, I don't have that answer.
But it sounds like it's going to be a better situation. Somewhat better.
Any other questions of the board? I did make a modification to that motion, if that's amicable, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve Donald R. Miller's request for a well isolation distance waiver for the property at 1748 Becker Road.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion from Mr. Wigglesworth, second from Mr. Weaver, Ms. Switzer, please pull the board.
Mr. Weaver?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye.
Mr. Wigglesworth?
Aye.
Mr. Russell?
Aye, guys have a five nothing. Next up, we have the road dedication, which is nice, Landis Farms Bloomfield Way dedication, Mr. Beck.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Nate, you're doing a hell of a job. The benefit of a rendering for Landis Farm that was provided as part of the preliminary plan, I highlighted the area that includes Bloomfield Way. It is the, basically the street they as you see it, I don't know how else to describe it. Before you gentlemen, the dedication, it has been inspected by Perry Madonna and Scott Hane. Signs are installed. Everything is everything is up to par and up to requirements except for one thing. Thanks to Susan Piper's review of the maintenance bond, there is some issues that need to be corrected there. So, staff is recommending the board adopt the resolution, accept the deed of dedication and the maintenance agreement and establish the maintenance bond in the amount, in the amount specified in David Miller's letter with the condition that the developer provided township with the corrected maintenance bond no later than September 21st, 2020. With that condition, staff and Susan Piper's office will hold the documents and wait to record those documents until we get the corrected maintenance bond.
Any questions of the board? One positive thing is, I mean, EG Solstice is done just, I mean, I heard, I hear no complaints. So, that's, that's a it's nice having them do, doing work in the township at this point compared to some of the other housing developers and some of the more recent ones we've had in the past year. There are two last ones, which are our two most recent housing developments, I think have gone off pretty flawlessly when we look at some of the past developments over the last decade before them, so. Kudos to them for moving the project along they are and, and like I said, I'm not hearing anything from staff or residents sending issues with the work they're doing and urge them to take on the last couple that we got left in the township. They're a very good builder as well as a contractor. Any questions to the board at this point? Anybody from the audience, no one? Anyone from Zoom?
No.
Okay, so I'll read the motion. Motion is to adopt Resolution 2020-30 approving the deed of dedication and road maintenance agreement and to establish as the roadway maintenance guarantee, an amount of $803,906.50 conditioned on the township receiving a corrective maintenance bond no later than September 21st, 2020. So, do I have a motion?
Don't move.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion from Mr. Bennett, second from Mr. Wigglesworth, Ms. Switzer, please pull the board.
Mr. Weaver?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye.
Mr. Wigglesworth?
Aye.
Mr. Russell?
Aye, guys have a five nothing. Okay, next up is the DL Holdings Final Plan 2213 Lee Brook Road, denied the financial security reduction number three, Mr. Beck.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Due to some outstanding issues related to stormwater management and the as-built plan, DMA is recommending a zero-dollar amount release or in essence, a denial of the request for reduction and, and/or release of the financial security for the DL Holdings plan. With that being said, staff recommends the board deny the request.
Any discussion of the board at this point? Anything on Zooms, we all have an audience here now?
There's not.
Okay, motion to deny the financial security reduction for DL Holdings LLC Final Plan 1326.03 as document David Miller's September 8th, 2020 letter. Is there a?
Don't move.
May I do a second?
Second.
Okay, motion for Mr. Bennett, second for Mr. Weaver, Ms. Switzer, please pull the board.
Mr. Weaver?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye.
Mr. Wigglesworth?
Aye.
Mr. Russell?
Aye, guys have a five nothing. Next up, I'll get more opportunities to deny things. Veranda Harrisburg Phase 1, denied the financial security release. Phase 4, approve the financial security release. If there's no objections to the board, we will take both matters and hand it at one time. Sure.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. There's an issue with Phase 1 related to the as-built plan. And Scott Hane attempted to get the situation resolved as part of this request, unfortunately, he could not due to the fact that this, this project, they were 15 years old and some of the people have left either charter homes or the construction company, what have you. Hopefully, they'll get it corrected in the future and we can finally release the remaining amount of financial security for Veranda Phase 1. If you take notice to DMA's letter, he does outline that it's Phase 1A and Phase 1B. Due to the fact that it was revised, one, financial security is for the public improvements related to stormwater management. And then with the fact that the township did accept the roads for dedication, the other financial security is for roads curb and I believe sidewalk. For Veranda Phase 4, staff agrees with DMA and based on their September 11th letter, recommends the board approve the reduction as stated in DMA's letter.
I'm not to, just as I got done talking about how great Landis Farms is and how we're releasing things in a timely and reasonable manner. For this Phase 1, since it's been around for so long, at what point do we call the securities and do the work ourselves? At what point are we at when we get to get to that point?
It's the stormwater management plans and calculations. And I don't know if the amount of money that is remaining is enough to complete the work. I think it's enough to hold their hand to the fire for them to complete it. I would, I could check with DMA to see how much it would cost to get the, those items completed. And I can have that for the board at the next meeting.
Yeah, because I mean, as built and that, we might be able to do that for the remaining security months and just use our own engineer and just get the project wrapped up and closed out. And that's usually, that threat usually will get somebody to the table to finally wrap it up or just say, take care of it.
Yes, sir, I will check, I can't remember if it's a bond or a letter of credit, but I will check to see what type of financial security is and if there's any issues, I'll check with a attorney, Susan Biker, to see how we proceed with that.
Any other questions, discussion of the board? Okay, I'd like to handle this as one motion, so I'll read it out. Motion is to deny the financial security release for Phase 1 Veranda Final Plan as discussed. And motion is to approve the financial security reduction for Veranda Phase 4 as discussed and presented tonight.
I moved.
Have the motion, do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion from Mr. Weaver, second from Mr. Wigglesworth, Ms. Switzer, please pull the board.
Mr. Weaver?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye.
Mr. Wigglesworth?
Aye.
Mr. Russell?
Aye, guys have a five nothing. Okay, now we have our ad item 2220 Dairy Road, Sabre Sesca storm management fee, fee in lieu of for franchise overlay and fee in lieu of for bridge repairs. Is that Mr. Beck or Ms. Switzer, there's a lead ad, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I will take the blame for this. As Cindy alluded to, it's been a busy night, busy week.
Did I blame you? I didn't blame you.
No, I'm taking, I'm, I'm falling on the sword. I just said you alluded to the fact that we've been busy. This should have been a consent agenda item. So, there are no issues. As for the reason these were pulled out, it's just the fact that they were missed when I was putting my items in the agenda. I'd be happy to answer any questions, but at this point, staff is recommending that the board approve those items, establish the financial security stormwater fees and the fees in lieu.
And discussion of the board. No, we're not, I'm assuming nobody on Zoom at this point?
No.
So, the motion is to establish the project financial security stormwater management fees, fee in lieu of Dairy Road franchise improvements and fee in lieu of bridge repairs for the 2260 Dairy Road Warehouse Project township file 715404 as detailed in the David Miller letter dated September 10th, 2020. Do I have a motion?
Don't move.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion for Mr. Bennett, second for Mr. LaFever, Ms. Switzer, please pull the board.
Mr. Weaver?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye.
Mr. Wigglesworth?
Aye.
Mr. Russell?
Aye, guys have a five nothing.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, did I have a dream or a nightmare? But is there a signage matter there on Dairy Road that's before us or coming before us?
Coming before you.
Yes, sir, unfortunately, we can't give you too much information due to ex parte communication, but yes, there is a billboard, the application that was submitted for conditional use that will be coming before the board at the October 7th meeting.
I'm not clairvoyant, so I don't know where, where did I see it?
Good question, were you looking at my desk?
Probably in the the project's report.
Possibly, I saw it somewhere, all right.
Okay, so that, that ends our actionable items. We have nothing for old business unless somebody has something that we missed. I say none, nothing on new business. No traffic commission report, yay. Coming from a transportation engineer. And development service project report, Mr. Beck, if you have anything you wish to highlight?
Yes, sir. Penn State Health Medical Office Building, the footing foundation permit has been issued. Steve Bramble is working with Jason Stevens from Code Administrators to prepare for the, the actual permit for the medical office building. We don't know yet, but there could be an issue with the separation distance for the medical office building. We'll know more and can provide a better update once we get the building plans. I'm just going through, Lidl, we just got notice today that Lidl is planning their grand opening for November 18th in, or to November 21st. They have highlighted a few things they want to do as part of their grand opening, which goes above and beyond most store openings. However, this is the first Lidl in Lancaster. Staff views this as a, an opportunity to, one, support a lengthy development that's finally coming to fruition and culmination. And, two, to highlight the fact that the only Lidl in all Lancaster is in East Hemfield. However, staff is diligently working on this to prepare and avoid any types, types of fiascos that may come up out of it. The, the new traffic light on Good Drive and the access for Lidl and Lowe's should be installed by the end of September. They do have to go through a two-week period of flashing as required by PennDOT. But that should all be hashed out by the time they're ready for their grand opening in November. We're setting a date for any issues for either the last board meeting in October or the first board meeting in November in case we do have to bring anything before the board for approval such as a noise ordinance variance or anything else. Diane's going to work for, I've asked Diane to help coordinate with Fire Department and Police for any, any public safety issues related to traffic, what have you. Colin Cecil's, Nate and I will be working with Scott Hane, Jay States and Cindy to ensure that all the land development, stormwater and traffic issues are, if not completed, they are completed to a point that allows safe and efficient access and egress to the site. Steve Bramble is working on the building codes, he doesn't foresee an issue. And he is working with the contractor to address all the inspections. And it should be, he said, he thinks he should have all of his things done by the end of October. So, we, we should, we should have a better update for you at the next board meeting. And then we have a few plans for you to sign tonight, heat and control. They have started site work. We do have those plans for you. They're going to be looking to get those plans recorded, if not this week, early next week. 3072 Nolte Road Cluster Development. Scott Hane was able to finalize his first review letter and he sent it out on the 11th. And as I said, Mr. LaFever, there is a conditional use application coming before the board. We are advertising it for the October 7th board meeting for a new billboard. I believe it's a digital billboard on the property at 2260 Dairy Road. If you gentlemen are familiar, there used to be a two-sided billboard there and that had been removed and they're now seeking to replace it with a digital one.
That's for 283?
Yes. Yes.
Is this a digital or electronic billboard proposal?
Yes, I, I believe it is.
Do we, do we have the plan for the sheets at the health center?
We do, we do, DMA has not completed their first review of it as of yet.
Is it one as Sheets has recently been doing such as at Espen Shade Road or Eden Road? Is it one as Sheets has recently been doing, such as at Espen Shade Road or Eden Road, or is it?
As far as the details inside, we don't have those yet. We we don't have the building plans. If you're talking about a the sit-down eating areas that they're doing or.
Elevation, building elevation.
I would have to check the plans.
That we did have a meeting with them, though, and and got some very general, basic information regarding the footprint and the outline and what the canopy might look like. And it is gonna be very similar to the Eden Road. Right?
It's subdued design, not the flashy design.
To the extent of the brick even.
Yes.
It's different.
And it is gonna be on the smaller side. It's not one of their bigger. Bigger stores, so it's not gonna probably be as big as. Espen Shade or even the one down on Columbia in Centerville.
And then we have the other the other facility that's north of there, right by the air and changes being looked at too.
Yes, Scott Hane just got done with his first review letter for the revised preliminary plan and the final plan for lots one and three State Road Commerce Park, I believe.
Make it very aware of that, too. What's what's being proposed there?
A truck stop and a car wash.
A. Place a station with a few oversized parking spots.
There you go.
Yes.
It's not. It is not a truck stop as in a two hundred truck pace spaces or anything like that.
Would only have they would only have three. Three truck parking.
Okay, just wanted to clarify when people say truck stop, it's it's that's two hundred spaces for trucks.
What is what is the definition, though, for the they be allowed for the gambling terminals?
As far as I'm aware, I would say yes, but I would have to look into that more, Mr. Wigglesworth, to see what. If there's any. Specific site designs or anything like that, but from what I understand, if it's a truck stop, it'll it'll be eligible for onsite gambling establishments.
They prefer to be called travel centers. What is Oyster Point? Clean fill stormwater plan?
Board approved a plan for Light City Water. They own that property and they're using that as a place to stockpile their fill from the water main project that they're doing on Old Tree Drive and coming up Centerville Road.
Okay.
Or I should say crossing Centerville Road.
Okay.
Quick comment, since Mr. Weaver or not Mr. Weaver, Mr. Fever made the mistake of bringing up signs. Could I ask a couple of questions about signs? Do we make? Does the does our current ordinance make a distinction between a digital sign and an electronic message center?
I had to ask Susan Piper for some help on that. And she provided me a good legal opinion via an email. And I'd be happy to provide that to the board members, but basically, there is no difference between electronic. Variable message sign and a digital sign.
Okay, so right now there is no distinction between the two.
No.
Okay. Does our current ordinance? Regulate the length of a of a message in terms of how long it appears?
The ordinance regulates the amount of times it can change and it's once an hour.
But most are changing. A lot faster than that, correct?
They are. I think every single one of them is.
So we're not really regulating anything with a one-hour time period?
No, it's it's almost impossible to do that because most of them are. I would say. Once every thirty seconds.
Okay.
It really depends on the location, how traffic is going and the size.
Just asking whether we regulate them or not. That's that's all. I mean, these are all. Display size, dwell time, how long the the message can appear.
It's once per hour.
Okay. Do we regulate transitions? And animations or amount of scrolling?
Yes, we do.
Or amount of scrolling? Current currently, we do?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
And I should say, Mr. Bennett, that we do address. Any issues with digital signs based on complaints. If we get a complaint, we will address it. And a complaint can come from supervisor, a staff member or a resident.
I don't go looking for trouble. Trouble can find me. Okay. Okay. And then do you know whether the current electronic signs have an emergency message capability if needed?
That has been placed as a condition. I remember the Centerville Road billboard and some of the other ones that have gone through a conditional use has been a condition. Maybe allow me a few moments. I can check on our ordinance. I can't remember off the top of my head, but I know it has been done for some of the ones that were recently approved and installed.
Okay, just when you have. Not urgent. Thank you.
And the questions to the board? And Ms. Switzer, manager's report.
You have my report. There's just one thing with Holland Street, number four. I regret to inform you that that's been delayed one more month. Amtrak has does not have the staff available to do handle the outage. So I've made everyone possibly that I could contact in PennDOT to make them aware of them and displeasure, but it's Amtrak.
If it falls on the track, it's on Amtrak at this point.
There's enough documentation.
They would legally go after us, but it's on them morally.
Yeah. And there was an executive session this evening from six thirty to six fifty regarding a personnel matter.
Any questions to the board about the manager's report?
Just just a comment on the park and recreation meeting that we had concerning pickleball. And it was the consensus, I think, at the meeting. We had we had a good meeting with the pickleball league. In a prior meeting, we had. Or maybe it was that meeting, we had agreed that we would look to install a fence between the trail and neighbor's property to attempt to deaden the sound. And and remove the volleyball poles, which aren't necessary any longer. Is that something that we that was something that we wanted to sort of get moving on, right?
I think according to the Public Works Weekly List, they're working on it this week.
Okay.
I think the question was being able to get the fencing, and I believe that was the case, and they've gotten it.
Okay.
Perry, are you still on on? If you could.
Yes, thank. Yes, I'm sorry. We were looking to find enough material for that. It looks like it's gonna be roughly a hundred feet. That's basically twelve section sections of that fence and we're trying to find to see where it can be purchased from.
How high will that be?
A six-foot fence.
And we're also going to improve the existing surface, filling in some cracks, right, Perry?
Correct. We I don't know that we've made the exact determination what we're going to do yet. This year, we might try just to fill in some of the cracks. They're very minor. But the the ground there does need resurfaced at some point, and we did have that discussion in that meeting also.
Is this proposed fence one that can be treated with anti-graffiti coating?
I don't believe so. It's just the plastic PVC fence that's the the basic residential design. It's just a temporary measure. It's not that expensive, but yeah, I I. Don't know how well paint sticks to these. I've never tried to remove paint from them, but it is PVC, so.
Solid to stop sound?
They're 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 basically hollow, the the slats that are in there. There's no lattice or anything. It's just a solid six-foot-high fence. That was the suggestion because it was probably the quickest and the the most reasonable to install.
But it's solid, okay.
I think the township has been very reasonable concerned that this park has been around for decades now. And this use has been going on for a long time now. I mean, just now become a problem.
I would agree. Thank Parks and Rec for the work on it. I know we're not gonna be able to satisfy everybody. I just hope that the other residents along the park don't expect. Same.
Fencing, right? Yeah, we don't want to. We don't want to fence the whole park. That's not really the desire. That's. Pretty much every very few people live around the park that would have been there when it was still being parked. So pretty much everybody moved in knowing they were moving next to a park. It's like a recent complaint I heard. That occurred on next door about resident complaining about the drummers playing the drums and the band practicing outside. At the school. And needs to say that person didn't receive too great a feedback from the residents that responded back to that post. But when you move next to a certain area and you move into it, you have you're accepting what that person or that entity was already doing for years and decades. Really don't have room to grumble. If you don't want to listen to a band play, don't move right next to a high school stadium. You don't want to hear kids playing soccer, don't move next to a park. If you don't want to hear the clang of railroad tracks, don't move next to a house that has an industrial neighbor right next door, the railroad tracks. I mean, that's just that's just basic one-on-one for homeownership, so. As somebody who lives next to an industrial truck. You put up with some occasional noise. I do want to point out one thing. You want to talk about the Church Street resurfacing meetings, Ms. Switzer? I think that's worthy of a flag on that one. That's something because that comes before the board.
So we've had two meetings regarding the Church Street resurfacing project. And particularly regarding the curb and sidewalk repairs replacements that need to happen with the properties closest to Landisville. Yes, Landisville, from Main to Bank. PennDOT will be coming in resurfacing the whole Church Street. And the area from Bank to Main Street, we are asking the residents to replace the curb and sidewalk. So we had those meetings. The first one was for the residents. The second was for business and churches. The meetings were generally well attended. There was some feedback. There's concern from the residents regarding the cost. We did provide them with estimates, which were prevailing wage estimates. So they were higher than what would normally be the case. We said that we would come back to the board when the time was appropriate to talk to the board about potentially covering the cost between the private. Charge versus the preliminary the prevailing wage charge. I have a few meetings scheduled for Friday for the ones that we missed. Met with somebody today, also a good meeting. So it's gonna be coming back to the board at some point in time to talk about what the board is willing to give to these residents as compensation or offset. To the cost of that replacement project.
When we met with them, we did take a hard stand about the township's policy that curb and sidewalk is the property owner's responsibility. And I would encourage the board to continue that position. This is a perfect example. It's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for one block of sidewalk. And I also would encourage us as we approve land development plans in the future, that not all streets require curb and sidewalk. Not all streets are equal and the same, just like I do think the sidewalks along Landisville. Main Street, Landisville, as well as Main Street, Reuters Town on Marietta. Need to be maintained. They need to meet ADA requirements and they need to be in place and that people bought those houses. Knowing that they were taking on sidewalks and that sidewalk is necessary. But when you get into the rest of Landisville and you walk other streets along Landisville, there is absolutely no need in there for our sidewalk, nor is there sidewalk in there. And so as we approve developments, and there's not that many left residential, but as we approve residential developments in the future. Just have to keep in mind that when we improve this infrastructure, there is a bill coming due to a homeowner at some point for that infrastructure. And so these homeowners, a number of them wanted actually to upgrade their sidewalk. But because of the PennDOT process, did not. And that was actually a common comment when we were when Mr. Fever and I were meeting with the residential property owners, the number of them commented. That they had explored replacing the sidewalk, but it was just too difficult with the PennDOT process to do that. But even they recognized that they needed to do something with the sidewalk. So there we have a very good meeting with them. I do think from a sense of fairness, though, it'd be nice for us to cover the cost differential of. It's not all sidewalk is the same, so it's a lot cheaper to replace sidewalk when you're not dealing with PennDOT than when you are dealing with PennDOT. And they are really in a position where they can't do the project where if we go and we assess sidewalk along Main Street in Landisville, homeowner can do it. They don't have to go to PennDOT. It's outside the right of way. They can make the repairs. It's very cost effective, but to do this sidewalk for this first block, it's all within PennDOT's right of way. It's all right up against the narrow roadway. It's only twenty-two feet wide, curb to curb. And it's just not something a homeowner themselves can do. And that drives up the costs. And so I think we've got we need to stand firm with our requirements that curb and sidewalk are the homeowner's responsibility, but I also think we can extend a little grace. With covering what the cost differential would be between what any of the other residents would be paying if it was in Veranda and they had to replace sidewalk or curb. Versus why would cost replace curb and sidewalk along Church Street? So that's kind of like a little bit of a compromise, but we're not establishing a precedent where we're actually covering half the cost of the sidewalk or we're taking on a sidewalk project. Which I think would be a mistake for the township to do. If we start that precedent, that means we basically own all the curb and sidewalk in the township.
How do we determine what the difference is and? What is the process to apply it?
You can get quotes from contractors and you can engineer estimates to in between the two, and you can have a pretty good idea of what it costs. Versus what it costs not to PennDOT way.
Are we gonna do that like on a per square foot basis per resident or how will we?
I think that's work to be figured out. And this this is more just philosophical tonight, or I think there's gonna have to be a lot. This is a project that's two years out. At this point, so we got a lot of time to flesh this one out.
We'll compare it with a full plan.
This is this, I mean, the residents did appreciate that we were giving them two years' notice.
Yes.
One was looking to sell their property, so I think we accelerated their process of selling at this point, too. So. Anything else for the manager?
No.
Anything else with any of the board reports? Okay, now the public comment. We have absolutely no public left in our audience. Is there anybody on Zoom?
There is people there, but no, there's no comments.
Okay, seeing no comments at this point. It is now nine oh. Seven, nine oh eight, and we will adjourn our meeting. Thank you.
You can go home now.